Budget session of the Kingman City Council and leadership team to order on May 6, 2020 at 9:00 a.m. And this is a work session, and so I'm going to turn it over. I don't even think we need a roll call, do we?
No ma'am.
Let's, I'll just turn it over to you, Manager Foggan, to lead the discussion.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate it. Again, long time no see, everybody. Wonderful technology, but it is, it is limited in its, its capabilities, especially the social side of things. But appreciate everybody that has been able to attend last night and today. Just a few things as we get started. We are presenting to you a balanced budget. It has received a number of changes since we first started, which we will do our best to point out. There's a few items that have been in flux up until as late as yesterday. So we'll do our best to explain those things as well. Again, I understand the limitations of this technology and we can't see everybody. And it will be really important that if you, we want to welcome questions. And if you have a question, please feel free to re, you know, call out and we will answer your questions as we go. I don't want anybody to think that we're ignoring them. If, if there's clarification needed, please, please, please stop us. This format should feel pretty familiar to everybody. We're going to go through this budget like we did last year. Tina and I will tag team the information and then we have, I will walk everybody through the budget. And I have my leadership team standing by if there are deeper into the operations questions that I can't answer. I've asked my team to be available to jump in when needed. So that's kind of how we will progress. So we'll go ahead and get the presentation up on the screen for everybody and get started. All right, everybody see, see that?
Yes, I do. This is Jen.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. So for our objectives, we want to, of course, identify the budget highlights, review the city council and citizen priorities based on the citizen survey that we did. We of course want to highlight the 2021 budget recommendations for each operating division, go over the five-year capital improvement plan, and of course, talk about some highlights within that, within the capital projects. So that's kind of how we will progress. I need to figure out how to keep my slideshow going. All right, for, we're gonna have, this will be a little bit tricky. I'll have to leave my microphone on and then when it's Tina's turn, I'll have to turn mine off. So I've been using push to talk, but we'll have to do a little bit different. When you do screen share, it, it changes things. Oh, oh, well Tina's not in the Zoom meeting, so she'll, we'll share, we'll share. All right, so just as a reminder, on the budget calendar, we started this process, it feels like a couple of years ago, but it has not been quite that long. But we started with a citizen survey that wrapped up in December. We, as a leadership team, started the process of gathering information. We, of course, in that's December into January, we had our meeting with the council on the 15th of January, our strategic planning with the council on the 6th of February. We've been working on compiling all of the information, which we've been able to do as of April 30th. And of course, we find ourselves here, May 6th, talking about the proposed budget and part of May 7th. For the official actions, we will be doing that on June 2nd. The tentative budget will be adopted and then June 16th, the final budget adopted. And for some reason, I'm still having a hard time progressing through my. All right. So we, as I mentioned, in our budget development, we have a balanced budget. And the question for a lot of people is, how did, how did we get there? Of course, we want to make sure to acknowledge those citizens that took the citizen survey. We really appreciate the community input, the kind of the vision that they share, the outlook they have for the community and expectations. We had an amazing council retreat with, with the leadership team and the mayor and council, councillors identifying council priorities. We've taken the capital improvement projects, aligned those with the council priorities along with community input. Tina and her team have done the forecasting of the revenues and fund balances. The departments, the leadership team have done a great job in bringing forward their operating budget numbers. And then, of course, the, the result of that is a, is a balanced budget. So the city council priorities based on our strategic planning are the, these, these categories are our prior, main priorities. Improved city services and livability for our citizens, modernization of our services and operations. Of course, economic prosperity, which plays a big role in not only the council priorities, but the citizen survey and what the citizens feel are, feel is very important. And then communication and teamwork partnerships, and that's partnerships both within the community as well as regionally statewide and even with federal partners. And then a culture, really developing a culture that is, is inviting, friendly. And, and I would need to put in there, safe. Just a little, some excerpts from the citizen survey that we, we thought were important to highlight. We get to ask a couple of specific questions as part of our citizen survey that are specific to what we're thinking and wanting to know about from the citizens. This one, question 13, please rate how important, if at all, you think it is for Kingman, the Kingman community to focus on each of the following for the next two years. And it's, you know, the overall, overall economic health of Kingman continues to be extremely strong. Feeling of safety continues to be very important. Health wellness opportunities for citizens. Think that, I hope that nobody's surprised by that, but if you are, just look around, the number of people that are getting out and being active over the last couple of months has been, has been really actually great to see. There's been some silver lining in the terrible pandemic that we've been dealing with and people getting outside and enjoying the, the natural resources has been one of those silver linings. Education enrichment, can, that's important as well. And then all the way down to just the overall built environment of Kingman. You know, the design, buildings, parks, transportation system. All of these things are extremely important to our citizens. And I think you will see that we have, are proposing money to be spent and services to be dedicated to all of these areas with some emphasis in, in all those categories. The second question is, please indicate how important, if at all, each of the following projects and issues will be for the city to address in the next five years. These categories, these are things that we were, wanted to know last year. Of course, maintaining, improving city streets, no surprise there. Our citizens can clearly see that the, the transportation system, our road system needs attention and it needs attention not only now, but in years to come. And then the categories that follow are somewhat, I would say, quite a ways behind the streets, but still rise to, to being very important to our citizens. You know, recreation for both youth and adults, downtown streetscape, citywide beautification efforts, improving the aging infrastructure of buildings, the public art, performing arts opportunities, and then just increasing the number of walking and bicycling trails. I'll just call them all use trails. All right, budget highlights. So considerations that, that we had to go through. And really, this is based on our, our last two months of experience. And we were, before the pandemic hit, we were building a budget. We were on our way to having the five-year capital projects done. The department heads had submitted their information for personnel requests and for projects. And, and we were, we were, we were making it happen and then the pandemic happened. So it, it actually forced us to push on the brakes, stop the process a little bit and, and then put these considerations in, into place. And really that, that comes down to how much of a role will unemployment play in our local economy? As, as you know, many folks with our stay-at-home order, businesses were, were forced to close their doors. And a lot of people were, were laid off, furloughed, or just lost their jobs. And so that was part of what we looked at, how many local businesses will never open their doors again? Then, of course, housing and building industry will, you know, how will that be affected? What, is this truly a downturn in the economy like we saw in 2008, 2009? Or, you know, is this just a short blip? Those are things that we've been trying to understand. What will the recovery look like? Will it be a steep incline or will it be a really slow recovery? And we've spent, I know Tina and I have spent a few hours listening to economists from different areas of expertise talk to try to understand that as we've tried to readjust the budget. You know, and then looking into the fiscal year 2021, what's the likelihood of COVID returning? You know, what, you know, when does a vaccine come into play? Is, you know, do we, do we face something like we did in the spring when fall or winter hits? Will, is there a new normal beyond the new normal that we've been living in since the Great Recession? And then, you know, all, all things considered, what type of budget do we develop? You know, I, and I would say that Tina and I have spent some time talking about that, you know, just slash and burn. I, I have, you know, I've spent some time talking with some of my peers, watching some webinars from ICMA. And, and that was something that, that we really had to talk about. And I just, I, from our, our point of view and what we've, what we've talked about is that, that we've been, I would say that we've been cautiously optimistic about this pandemic and about the recovery. And I think you'll see that through the numbers and the actions that we, that we've taken. So with that, I, I'm gonna let Tina walk you through kind of the, the revenue forecast, kind of the information on, on where she thinks that we're headed. And so I'm gonna just trade spots with her or are you logged in or are you?
I'm not, but I can judge. I have the presentation in front of me, so I can just.
Can you, can everybody hear Tina?
Can everybody hear me?
Okay, but we'll, we'll, I'll push my computer closer to her and we'll go from there.
Great. So for the fiscal year 21, recommended budget, the total revenues are $183.6 million. The table that you see on the screen in front of you gives you a comparison of the last couple of years. Most of the revenues that we are anticipating to collect are in participation and that is primarily because of the Rancho Santa Fe Parkway TI project as well as the Dross site cleanup that we're, that we'll be receiving DOJ money on to, to clean up. And then, of course, grants are most of that intergovernmental. And then we go down to some debt and then so on and so forth through our taxes, state shared revenues. And just a quick, a quick look at the local sales tax. When we look at where we were in 19, we collected $22.9 million. Our adopted budget for 20 was at 20.1. And you'll see where our estimates are for 20 and then where we see we're going to be in 21.
Next page.
So when we build a budget, it's all about the appropriations. And so our total fiscal year 21 appropriations are $219.3 million. And in, in fiscal year 20, our total appropriations were $214.1 million. So not much of a difference between the two years. You'll see on the chart below that personnel is pretty even, supplies and services, slight difference, but overall, there aren't a lot of differences from year to year. So operating budgets, so these are all of our divisions that have people in them. And these are, they decreased from fiscal year 21. And I don't think that's a surprise at all. We are, when we were building the budget, we wanted to ensure that the revenues that we were estimating to collect in fiscal year 21 covered the expenditures, those operating expenditures. And so we wanted to ensure that, and in order to do so, that was going to require a decrease in the operating budgets. So if we, if we take out that one-time PSPRS payment of $3.1 million, then the operating budgets overall experienced a decrease of just about 5% or just under 5%. And then this is the operating budget comparison by fund, breaking it down by fund. And you will see that the general fund does have a larger decrease than any of the other funds across the board.
All right, thank you, Tina. So one of the things that we wanted to just talk with you about is our efforts, what we, what we are doing kind of as we finish up 2020, fiscal year 2020, what, what some of the things look like for trying to stay well under budget with kind of the reduction in, in revenues for this last quarter. And so staffing levels changed in 2020 somewhat. The, the police department earlier in this fiscal year gave up two police officer positions. And that was in an effort to finalize their compression issues that they were facing and had been facing for several years. As you recall, we took some steps in the prior fiscal year to, to address their compression issues. They had had a hard time and continue, I wouldn't say that, that it's as hard, but they continue to have a little bit of a difficult time filling positions. They had had four positions, clearly four positions. It was much more than that over the last three, four years that they have not been able to fill and they've been doing without. And so the leadership team at the police department had come to the conclusion that it was better for them to give up those positions and fix, help fix the compression issues within the department. So that was done pretty early in our 20 budget year. And then we had some reductions with, at the golf course. And we also had a solid waste with some reductions as well, just, just based on change in operations and trying to, to save some money. We continue to have the pension liability. We've talked about that a number of times. We have that prepaid number of 4.1 million. Then we have for this year, one-time payment of 1.55 million. I guess for this year, I should say fiscal year 21. And that will, that is utilizing the fund balance exceeding the 40% that we've talked about. I guess we do, we will point out. I guess we do, we will point out, it's, I will point out that the $1.55 million is in contingency reserves. We will, of course, hold that money back and pay that much later in the fiscal '21 budget year than what we have done in the past, which is pay that early in the, you know, in July when the fiscal year starts. Just, just in case the recovery is, is worse, or we have something happen in the fall where we, where we have to deal with the pandemic again. So that will be a little bit of change of how, how we paid that in, in the past. So we will hold that back and pay that later in the fiscal year. What may change our mind on that is if, for some reason, the state incentivizes an early payment. You know, if they said, hey, we'll give you credit for 2% for every $100,000 you pay or something. We, we may consider doing something different than that. But right now, we're planning on paying that at the end of the fiscal year instead of the beginning. Employee compensation.
Manager Foggan?
Yes, Mayor.
I have a question, just going back to the cautiously optimistic and your discussions you've been having.
Yes, ma'am.
How much of that is based on the sales tax being reduced locally, an increased share from online that would translate to revenue? Is that factored in?
Yes, it was, yeah, yeah.
Because so many people went to online, but we did get some benefit from that, right?
Yeah, oh, absolutely. And so, you know, one of the things that, that I go, I appreciate you pointing out that cautiously optimistic. We, we will show you the decline in, in percentage-wise and, and, and in the dollar amounts. They may be not quite as big as, as people are, are thinking. I mean, there, it's a big hit to the general fund, as Ms. Tina already pointed out. But what we found was that the decrease in this last quarter wasn't as steep as a lot of people would have thought it would be because we still had our very large sales tax providers still with their, their doors open. And, and we had, we, of course, we saw online sales. We know from national news and state news that, and, and the economists we listen to, that online sales were, were up dramatically over the last couple of months. So our, our hit to sales tax was not as dramatic as it could have been. If you rewind this back to maybe pre-Amazon days, it, it could have been really devastating. It's devastating anyway, but it's, it's much softer because people were able to do business online. And, and thank heavens for Wayfair legislation that went into effect last October because we're kept, we're now capturing all, all of the online sales rather than a portion of the online sales as well. So there's, there's, there is that piece, you know, that, that, you know, we're, we're still missing our small businesses. We're still missing the tourism businesses, the hotels, the restaurants. Those are big parts of our, our revenue pie. And, and that's really where, where you're gonna see where we're predicting that we, that we're, we're gonna be shorting, so. Good question.
Thank you, thank you.
On the employee compensation, I think this has been a top priority for the, for me and for the, for the city council to make sure that we are continuing to pay our most important asset, and that's our, our, our city team members. We had a plan to increase salaries for 2021. Unfortunately, there will not be any increases across the employee population of the city and/or COLA adjustments, unfortunately. Benefits for employees went up very slightly, and we're just proposing in, in this budget just to cover that amount, equated to about $83,000. So we felt like we needed to do something for them. And it's, it's not much, but that's what employee compensation looks like for 2021. There, I, I will say that you will see some specific adjustments in specific departments. And I will tell you that when we get to those, that those departments have made the appropriate cuts in which to, to have the adjustments for their employees, so. All right, continuing with budget highlights, solid waste service. We've, as you know, we've been going through a rate study trying to get our garbage rates not only analyzed, but in a place where we, we know where, we can provide not only the service, but that we can provide the equipment and personnel that it's appropriate to pick up solid waste. So on the, the May night, this is kind of a, I'll say it's a preview to our May 19th council meeting. We will have the rate study for council on May 19th. It's right now, based on the recycling market, I know we've talked about this a number of times, but the recycling program has been removed as part of what we're doing for COVID. And until the market conditions improve, you know, the rate study will, we will talk through what that ultimately looks like. And also, you know, one of the things that we've discussed a number of times is the, the amount of time and money that we're spending on fixing trucks. Our solid waste trucks are in shambles. So the rate study will, will talk about how we deal with trash trucks, and then commercial rates and the need for those to increase. So that's just a preview of the May 19th rate study presentation.
Ron?
Yes.
This is Vice Mayor Luthner. Is that study, is that study gonna show what it would cost the citizens of Kingman to continue with the city providing trash service compared to what it would cost the citizens to provide privatized sanitation services?
So...
I thought we were gonna look at, at the all options.
Yes, we are. We wanted, we wanna present what the rates will look like continuing, as well as what, if, if there's a bid or a process to go to, well, to go to privatization, it will be part of that conversation.
Okay, there's, but there's an apples and apples to comparison.
Well, that's, yeah, that's, that's kind of the challenge is, you know, once a week pickup versus our two, twice a week pickup. Those are all things that we're gonna cover with you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I have a question about the expense to replace the trash trucks.
Yes.
I'm trying to find it in the budget. I, I think it's one point, is it $1.6 million a year for a couple of years?
Yes, for three years.
And that is gonna come out of the general fund, is that right, instead of?
No, absolutely not.
It doesn't? Okay, so the, so the rate study, they will, they will have to start collecting enough money to cover that $1.60.
Yep.
Okay, because there's not, there's not quite that much in there right now. Okay, that was my question, is if we were, if that was coming out of the general fund?
No, yeah, no, the, the, yeah, the garbage service, if it can't, if we can't operate it as a small business and make it pencil out, we're certainly not gonna take money from the general fund to help it, so.
Thank you.
You betcha. And that, you know, again, we'll, we'll cover that in much more detail. The, the, the next line item highlight that we wanted to just point out to you is there's a, a line item that we included called the Economic Recovery Program. In that, I've been working with Tina and, and with Gary and his team on, you know, what, what can we do as an organization in an effort to try to get tourism back up, help, help our, our small businesses, help, you know, help our economy in, in as many ways as we possibly can. So what Gary and his team have done is they've, they've basically looked at kind of what's some, you know, what are some best practices, or what are they hearing? A lot, you know, we're all sitting through webinars and reading additional information, trying to glean what, what other communities are doing, what we could take advantage of. And so this, this program breaks into a bunch of different, of course, smaller ideas, you know, so advertising and regional marketing campaigns. We, we know from a couple of, of the webinars that we've been in with economists that they're, they're talking about kind of international travel and tourism, not recovering for at least a year, but that regional road trips and those kind of activities are really where you, tourism communities such as ours could really take advantage of. So part of that money would be used to do some additional advertising and regional marketing, to try to attract people to, to come on a, on a road trip to the, to the Mother Road, right? What, what better place to, to go on a road trip than the place that kind of started road trips? Route 66. The other thing that we've been talking about, and we've, and I think it becomes even more important now, is a Route 66 celebration late summer, maybe around Labor Day, towards the Labor Day weekend. There's a couple of programs for support local or shop local programs. We've done a shop local in the past, but a bigger, expanded support our local businesses program where we would do a number of those events, as well as perhaps some kind of coupon program. Of course, we're, these are all programs that need to be developed and rules attached to them. We've also, I know that we've talked about this, when we created the facade grant program, we talked about doing a sign, a kind of a business signs and mural, and a murals program. So we've, we've designated some money within this, this Economic Recovery Program to do that. Of course, this one in particular, the signs and murals program, it, it, when we get it into place, would be ongoing, just, just like the facade program is now. Another thing that we, we thought we could do is expand the facade improvement program. That not only increase the amount of money that's in the program, but also to add some, make it easier, it, or I don't know, easier, but make more money available for individual grants. Right now, we're at 80/20. I think I, I told you when we first started the program, the beauty of the program was if we wanted to see more participation, we could change the grant share to different percentages. So one of the things that, that we've, that we talked about was instead of 80/20, going to 90/10 and increasing the, right now, the maximum is $5,000 per grant that we will participate on, that we would move that to $10,000. Also, one of the things that we've talked about is having, or that the city would contact an architect, and part of the facade grant program could be that we include architectural rendering of, of the business, or the building's front with some, some ideas from an architect. One of the things that we've heard from, from business owners or building owners over this last year that we've, that we've had the facade grant program is that they weren't quite sure how to make the front of their building look better. And so one of the ideas was, hey, well, if, if we have some additional money, we could have an architect give an idea, a rendering, and something for, for people to follow. So that's kind of the facade improvement program. Another idea, it's, it's been something that's kind of kicked around in other communities as well, is, it's called Google My Business. And it's, it's a third-party provider who basically goes in and helps the business get a better online presence, you know? One of the things that my, our ED team has run into over this pandemic period is, you know, we've been trying to keep business information updated on our COVID-19 microsite, as well as our tourism site. And what we've run into is that businesses haven't updated their online profiles. Phone numbers are, are no good. They, they don't ring to anybody, no one, you know, that, you know, website information isn't correct, just a whole bunch of that kind of, kind of thing. So those, so the, the Google My Business would, would actually give folks an opportunity to, to have their information up to date, current. And people, you know, as you know, we're, we're, if we weren't already electronically or tied to our electronics, we're even more so now. So having these profiles updated is gonna be extremely important for our businesses. So that's, that's kind of the Economic Recovery Program. It's, I think it is an opportunity to, to, to help businesses and, and...
Ron, this is Vice Mayor Luthner. Could I ask a question really quick?
You certainly can.
All those programs, I think, sound really wonderful, but I'm just wondering, none of them are, as far as individual programs, seem to be above $50,000. And I'm just a little curious why they're all listed in the five-year capital improvement program and not listed as operating budget items. And I think we just need to have a standard process to add or remove CIP items or CIP projects. Because when you, when you compare all those, those projects you just listed to the current CIP projects, it doesn't really jive with the above $50,000, and it's not a study, and it's not a physical improvement or a piece of capital equipment. So I just, I'm wondering why it's on the five-year CIP and not including the operating budgets?
Well, it, it certainly can be. The, we, we didn't want it to get lost. We wanted it to be understood that this was a one-off, special project. And so that's, that's really why you see it there. It's, it's not something that we would, that we would, you know, this isn't a normal operation and maintenance thing that, that, that we, we were, we are doing. So just to make sure that we were highlighting it and it was standing out is why, really why we, we showed it here, where, where it ultimately is accounted for. I, I don't know that, that we're, we're overly worried about. We're, you know, like I said, we just wanted to make sure that this one-time program and all the things that went with it weren't confused or kind of lost in the shuffle.
Yeah, I understand that. I think that it's still possible to highlight one-time programs under an operating budget. And I think if you just lump it all together and you, and you include it under a capital improvement plan, it kind of gets away from the definition and the, and the intent of the CIP, the five-year CIP.
Yeah, no, yeah, agreed. I mean, like I said, some of this stuff is, is stuff that we're in flux and working on. And it just honestly was a placeholder for it, why we worked on the programs.
Well, I can't speak for anybody else, but I think for myself, just to, just to keep our budgeting the way it is, you know, any, any project that's... the way it is, you know, any, any project that's a capital piece of equipment study goes on the CIP and there's a process to, some sort of a standard process to add or remove CIP projects. And then anything else that you want to do that's below that, or it's a program, a one-time program that it would be included and highlighted or spotlighted in the operational budget for the fiscal year. I think that would just be my, or my hope.
Yeah, it's again, um, where it ends up, you know, we're, there's nothing that we're, we're not married to where it currently is.
I think it would, it can give you enough more opportunity to highlight these programs if you were to include them individually in an operating budget, because you're not lumping them all together in a CIP item. And, and, and I had to reach out to you because I didn't know what that was. So I think if you were to break them out individually and, and kind of flush them out and describe them in the operating budget, it would even better to show people what you're doing.
Yep, got it. Any other questions?
I don't have a question. I just have a comment. Uh, what I appreciate about seeing it as a program is that it really highlights our support for the local business community. And I agree with Vice Mayor that it perhaps doesn't belong in the capital improvement projects, but, but I, just for the purposes of this presentation, I want to say that I think this consolidates a lot of things that we're doing and will do to support our small businesses and, and just the tourism in general. So I, I appreciate the effort that's gone into creating this and the events, the business support. Uh, it, it's, it's really important things that the city's doing. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that.
Ron and Mayor Miles, I would absolutely agree that the content is awesome. The content of all this is awesome. It's just, where do you, where do you show it in budget? That's all I'll say.
Yeah, no worries. All right. Um, the five-year capital improvement plan, another highlight. Um, you know, one of the things that when we, when we look at the five-year capital improvement plan, we, we always look at the things listed here, improve city services and livability, the economic prosperity, the city infrastructure. And of course, we have to, we have to take into account primary funding sources. And, um, one of the things that, that, of course, we're, we're looking at very closely, cash reserves, uh, transfers, debt proceeds, you know, what, uh, what are the operating budgets looking like? Um, you know, one of the things that we've been working on, um, that is going to ultimately affect the five-year capital plan is our impact fees. Um, you know, I want to point out that our impact fee study will be completed in fiscal year 2021. Uh, we had anticipated, um, implementing impact fees for, uh, starting January 2021. Um, right now, the budget does not, the budget that, that we're presenting does not have the impact fees in it. Um, obviously, as we've talked about a little bit earlier, understanding what the recovery looks like, um, you know, it, it could still be on the table. If we see that, um, construction, building, that, that side of our economy does not slow down or come to some kind of screeching halt, it may be something that we talk about. But in that cautiously optimistic period, we, we kind of, of course, anticipated that people, we're going to be really happy or willing to talk about a lot of rate increases. We certainly don't want to muddy the water on, um, on things that we know are super important, uh, such as the, um, now that, the, what we have for election, um, all permanent base. Yes, thank you. You know, we certainly don't want that to be in danger, hoping that, uh, folks, um, will look into that and, um, vote positively on it. Um, and so that's kind of where we are with the impact fees and what we've looked at with the five-year capital plan.
Ron, may I ask one question on that? Is it still, is it still administrations intend to adopt those development fees?
Yes, sir.
Good. You know, I, I think that it's appropriate and, and I'll go ahead and say it because it's my last year of council. Um, but you had, uh, the major builder, Angle, who railed against the sales tax. And so I think it's completely fair to ask them to pay these development fees because they've, I mean, they created it. That's all I'll say.
Yeah, uh, I, I would, I will just say that on the impact fees, um, as, and I know we've talked about this before and, you know, the, the, the politics of what's happened are, I'll, I'll leave that to you, the elected officials to, to chime in on. What I will say is that the impact fees are for new growth and for people to pay into the system as they come and live in our community. Those that have lived here have paid for the, for the, those parks and the infrastructure, water infrastructure and sewer infrastructure over time. And the, the impact fees are just that. They're the impact that new growth is having. And there's a fairness issue that I think they address. And the only other option that you have with, with, if you don't have impact fees are that all of us that live here currently pay for new growth as, as we move forward. And we don't, we haven't found a mechanism where people in our community will support increase in revenue to pay for new infrastructure. That has been, that's, that's the challenge. And so impact fees, having people that live in the community buy into that infrastructure just continues to make sense. And we will absolutely continue, um, to support that, uh, from at least the operations leadership side. And we'll bring you, uh, we'll, of course, our, as I said, we're going to, we're planning on, um, completing that impact fee study and then bringing it to the council. Uh, implementation-wise, whatever the council decides, we support. Just want to let everybody know that we currently have not, uh, in this budget, we do not anticipate or we've not, uh, put in impact fees for 2021.
Manager Foggan?
Yes, Mayor.
Uh, okay, the, the study is going to be completed when? This summer?
Uh, yes, I think, uh, what we were told is September. So I, I guess maybe early fall.
Okay, so then it would come to the council for decision on implementation?
Uh, we, I think the schedule, as I recall, had it coming to the council, the last meeting in October, first meeting in November.
Okay, so at that time, if the council acted on those impact fees, because we haven't discussed any ballot measures for November and I don't know if we're going to do that. But, uh, but if the council decided to implement the impact fees, uh, and we could determine when they began, is that correct?
Exactly right.
But if we begin them in this fiscal year, uh, could you even spend that, given that it's not in the budget?
No, and the chances of having enough to spend in the, in the six months, uh, probably wouldn't do anyway. Uh, you want, usually, there's two things that you do with impact fee money. You let it build up and spend it on, on projects, or you borrow money against it, um, and do projects earlier. Uh, so within this, you know, within the six months, there, all we would really have in the budget anyway is, is some revenue, uh, projections, uh, for collection. We would, we probably would not have any expenditures associated with it anyway.
So if that began on January 1st, 2021?
Yes.
You could just collect the funds to be utilized later?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you betcha. All right. Budget highlights. Uh, I'm gonna let Tina talk to you about this one. Go ahead, Ms. Tina.
So this is a topic that I'm pretty passionate about, which is our, um, contribution rates for our retirement systems. So just so that you're aware, is the increases that are taking place in fiscal year 21, ASRS is rate, so not our public safety employees. Those rate, those rates are typically equal for the employee and the employer, and they are going to be equal in fiscal year 21 as well. We will each contribute 12.22%. It is a very slight increase. Goodness, a total that I want to say is not even going to impact our budgets by, what is that, $15,000? So a very small, um, increase. However, our public safety, um, rate increases are pretty significant. It's going to increase our personnel costs in our public safety operating budgets by $369,000. You'll see that in fiscal year 21, we've got, there are three different tiers for the, uh, for the public safety employees. And between police and fire, those ranges for fiscal year 21, as far as the rates are concerned, range anywhere from 52.83% to 62.16%. Um, I would say on average, most of our employees fall between that 56 to 57%. And there may be the question that, hey, didn't we pay $3 million towards that last year? And yes, we did. However, because the reports, the actuarial reports that we receive, um, that dictate what our contribution rates must be are a year behind, that $3 million contribution will not go into effect until next year. So we should see a difference next year, especially if we continue to prepay and make these, um, one-time payments. So we will see, we will see that next year, but for this year, it's not taking any of that into effect with, or into account, which is why those rates have increased, um, so significantly, which is why it's so important that we continue to, um, pay down that amended liability, um, as, as, um, as much as we can. And the PSPRS employee rates remain unchanged.
Uh, Tina?
Yes?
We, uh, I, I believe that we originally talked about paying an additional, was it $9 million in this budget?
Five, I believe, is what we talked about.
Five million. And so what, what are we saying that we're going to pay extra than this year?
The 1.55 million that is going to sit in contingency.
So a big difference. And then we're, we are also holding on to that just in case a little bit longer. Is that right?
Yep, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I understood exactly what, what that change was going to be.
Other questions?
Ron, I would have one question.
Yes, sir.
Kind of, kind of related to the PSPRS, uh, contribution. I know that we didn't get anywhere with, uh, the legislative change we were requesting. Um, hopefully you guys still go forward with that, because I think that that would really all the PSPR, PSPRS, you know, public safety personnel retirement system problem as far as funding.
Yeah, and, and just to follow up on that, I, I know that Tom, the Tom Dorn group has continued, um, yes, we, we did not get the legislation as, as, as far as we would have liked. But, um, one thing that we've talked, that I've talked with Tom and his team about is to continue to get support from other communities. In a recent conversation I had with Tom, uh, he was actually getting more interest from cities in that legislation. Uh, before, there had been a couple that had expressed interest. Uh, it, it looks like there would actually be, um, a great deal more interest after this downturn. Um, you know, obviously, everybody saw a lot of loss in the stock market and, you know, the ability to pay back or do big chunks of, um, payments into the system have decreased. So there is a really good chance that people will be feeling like, or cities will be feeling like, maybe this legislation is a little bit more important. So yeah, we're, not only are we, we're, we are going to continue to push it, it's currently being talked about. So.
Yep, that's good news. I'm, I'm glad to hear about that. Uh, it, it's a, it's a fiscally sound and responsible way, uh, to provide those public safety services. And so if it does catch on, hopefully you'll tell everybody in the state that it started here in Kingman.
Yeah, well, we'll be happy to brag about it if it passes.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions? All right, well, let's talk about the general fund, uh, the budget highlights in the general fund. Um, of course, as Tina's pointed out, uh, the general fund, of course, has seen the biggest decrease, um, from, or a decrease from 20 to 21. So our, basically, we're predicting a 4.2% reduction. That equates to $1.3 million in estimated revenues. Uh, TPT collection down 1.1 million. That's, that's a huge, that's a, you know, for us, that's a pretty huge number. Uh, state shared, uh, sales tax, vehicle licensing down, uh, $400,000. State shared income tax, the one bright spot, uh, at least for this year, is that, uh, the state shared income tax will be up, uh, $483,000. Um, that, uh, that was already in place before the pandemic. Um, and so, uh, we're, we're grateful for that, but it only basically replaces the state shared, uh, sales tax and vehicle licensing that, that we're losing. So that's, that's kind of where we are with the revenues for the general fund. Uh, we're showing that the, that we're at 89.1% of the general fund compared to, uh, comprised of the TPT and state shared revenues. And you can see what that looks like in the chart below. Um, like I said, it, it doesn't, it, it doesn't look as big as what I think people had anticipated. But, uh, in a community with, uh, that's relies on sales tax and state shared revenue, a loss of 1.3 million out of the general fund i- is, is a big, big chunk.
And if I can just piggyback on that, um, the, the chart, we wanted to share with you what we were experiencing before the pandemic hit in, um, you know, late February, late February, March, because we were experiencing, goodness, over 8% increases in our TPT collections. And so we just wanted to share how, how big of a decrease we actually are going to experience um, for 20 and going into 21, if we were to actually have collected or, or continue to collect what we thought we were going to collect through 20. So just, uh, uh, just to give you an idea of where we were headed and where we ended up.
Yeah, good point. Yeah, thank you, Tina. So yes, we, we were, um, exceeding our revenue forecast for 20, uh, by about 8%. And, um, you know, we, we were pretty excited about, um, being able to pull off, um, some capital, you know, some additional capital projects and, and looking at, um, doing, you know, one of the things that we've talked about a lot over the last couple of years, and I know it's been on the forefront of conversations even before then, were the, the fix to compression, uh, issues within the departments for personnel, uh, specifically within the fire, um, uh, department. So these are, the, the, this reduction i- is, is much higher technically than 1.3 million. But, um, you know, you, you only get to spend what you collect. And so, uh, right now, um, not only are we not showing growth in that, we're actually showing a decrease of 1.3. So. All right. Uh, continuing, oh, Ms. Tina just covered this. Um, and so I, I think this, this graph really kind of, or the explanations really show you overall, um, where, where 20 really got a, really was hit. I will say that one of the things that, uh, we're, we're thinking will happen, and this is where we were cautiously optimistic, is that we will, um, see a slight rebound in restaurant and hotels, um, uh, revenue. And, uh, you know, I, my hope is that as Monday rolls around and the governors and the governor's slow reopening of the economy starts in, in greater depth, that, that we will see people go out and support these local businesses. And like I said before, earlier in the presentation, that, you know, we're, we're, we're hoping that we will see road trips, you know, regional road trips pick up. I don't think we're, you know, we obviously aren't expecting to see international travelers roll in as they normally would be at this time and into the summer. But I, I, I am, I am thinking that, that people will want to climb in the car and go visit. And I think we've got a perfect spot for them to come. So we, we are, I hope, predicting a little bit of a slight rebound for restaurants and hotels in twenty twenty one. All right. As far as the general fund operating expenditures, they are down twelve point six percent. And that is based on, or we've done this, by leaving positions vacant, and they will continue to be unfilled. The vehicle replacement, one of the things, as you know, we, that we worked through a couple of months ago was a, a vehicle leasing program. That actually turned out to be, in hindsight, I love twenty twenty hindsight, it turned out to be a great program to be involved in because we get to take and share that cash, spread that cash over a five or four-year period, rather than having to spend that money all upfront. So that, that program actually is, is going to save us cash and allow us to have the, and maintain our rainy day fund without having to tap into it. And I guess it's probably in here somewhere, but I think it's worth pointing out that in our budget that we're presenting, we're not, we are not using any rainy day fund money to, to really plug any holes. So I just, that I think is really, really important. Obviously, it's been a rainy day, and it certainly would have been easy to justify the use of it. But maybe more rain will come later. And so not, not tapping into that. I, I, I'm really proud of my leadership team for being able to reduce and keep services where people expect them to be. So I just want to point that out.
Senator Fogan?
Yes, ma'am.
Speaking of the rainy day fund, so that, we had agreed last year that anything above forty percent of reserves would be on PSPRS.
Yes.
Is that the one point five five million that we are holding back now?
Right.
But that's above the forty percent. So our rainy day fund is still based really on forty percent reserves. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, well, it's great that we're not going into that because we don't know what, what lies ahead exactly. So thank you.
Yeah, you betcha. And then just what, the way we've tackled the, is we've asked departments to look at reducing supplies, training, R and M, the equipment. Of course, we're holding back that PSPRS unfunded liability payment till the end of the year, as I, as I talked about. So, so we've, we've been able to do this. And again, I, I want to point out that, that our services, the way we've been able to do this, that city services, that the citizens have come to expect, will be completely operational and that we will have the personnel to provide those services. And so just, we're really, again, I can't thank the, the department leadership team enough for, for being able to look deep, dig deep. This is, I don't think it's sustainable over a long period of time, what we've asked departments to do. This isn't something where people can sit back and say, see, I told you that they didn't need to spend as much money. This, this really is a sacrifice, and we, we will be watching every penny. But what, you know, one of the things that this does do is that if there's an unexpected expense within a department, it, it could, it could hurt, it could hurt that department pretty, pretty badly. But right now, and we're, we've got all the services funded, and people and our citizens should expect to, to get the same services that they've, that they've been receiving at the high-quality levels that they get.
Ron, this is Vice Mayor Lingifelter. I would just say that, first of all, great job with not tapping into the rainy day fund. Second of all, you're absolutely right, it does come at a cost. When you start to get rid of training, when you start to defer repairs and maintenance, I mean, what you're really doing, if you do it long-term, is you're becoming a structurally weaker organization. So it does come at a cost, and I hope that people understand that. It's, it's temporary.
Yeah, well, and we saw it as we come, as, as communities came out of the Great Recession, the, the amount of unfunded liability or unfunded projects that were kicked down the path. Well, we, we talk about, almost every time we talk about the budget, you look at what's been done with streets as an example. It just, that can just keeps being carried along the road. So it's, it's something that we, we cannot do for a long period of time. We felt like we could do it for a year. And so that's, that's what we're going to do. And, you know, we have committed, yeah, you're right. As soon as you stop training your people, you can expect them not be as, as good as, as they, as they were.
Right, but on the surface, everything maybe looks the same. But when you go below the surface and you start to see, you know, that's where you start to see that the toll starts to, to take, to take, you know, pieces out from where you were, so.
Yep, exactly right. All right.
And manager?
Yes.
Manager, one other thing, I was thinking, as you said, the roads. You know, the pavement preservation program line item has gone to zero, I think, in this budget.
Yes, ma'am.
There is nothing left of those funds that we had received for six months. So there's going to be a period of time, and I think that will be a very visible to continue deterioration that we're very concerned about. And, and so I, I think it's not going to be invisible at any level of some of the contraction that has been made necessary.
Right, no, i- i- I think that's, that's clear, ma'am. And, and what we know about, you know, streets is another year of, of not maintaining them will, will show itself very clearly. And so something that we, we definitely, moving forward, need to be cognizant of. And, and we, we are, and we'll continue to, to, to speak to that, so. As far as general fund transfers, they are up about eighty percent. It includes a transfer of one point six million to the Capital Projects Fund to complete the remodel of a much-needed remodel of the Fire Station Two. We have the Capital Projects Economic Recovery and facade programs that we talked about. Again, bringing those back into the general fund, really not, not that difficult. Like I said, we, we wanted to make sure that we were highlighting those. So I feel like we have, so, you know, accounting for them back in the general fund's really not that hard. Including a one, a one-time transfer to the I-11 East Kingman Connection Project is in that. And then, of course, we have, we have to continue to fund our about a hundred thousand dollars towards retiree expenses. And then we have, of course, our contribution to run the powerhouse. And so, and we've already, of course, talked about the PSPRS, so we beat that, we beat that horse to death, so. And so that's kind of where the transfers are. Again, we'll, we'll be making those adjustments that the Vice Mayor and Mayor talked about. All right, so fund balance, we've talked about this a, a little bit already. Of course, our ending fund balance is, is down slightly. The, you know, if, where the fifty percent is versus where the forty percent is. So just, again, we've talked about that. So any questions about fund balance or what? It's one point five five million is what we're planning on spending on PSPRS. All right. Fiscal twenty one revenues, I, I'm going to let Tina talk to you about the revenues. Go ahead, Ms. Tina.
For her?
Yeah, yes, for her, yes, sorry.
So similar story as to the general fund, just is not, not as large dollar-wise, but our estimated revenues for fiscal year twenty one excluding our transfers are going to be down about a hundred thousand dollars from where we expect them to be at the end of fiscal year twenty. That chart below shows, similar to the general fund, what we were looking like before the pandemic and where we're going to end up. And we know that restaurants are going to be hit hard, although we have not been able to see any of the sales tax data for this last quarter yet. So we're still awaiting that first, that first month of, of data. But we know that they are going to be hit. And so one of the funding sources, of course, for HERF is that restaurant bar tax. And we know that the highway, the, the HERF monies will also, will also be impacted. And those are the two largest revenue sources for HERF.
Questions on the HERF revenue?
Did you want to talk about the expenses on the bottom, or do you want to cover that piece?
Oh, yeah, go.
Just go through it?
Yeah, and Ms. Tina's going to cover the bottom part of this as well.
So their operating budget is down twelve point six percent from the fiscal year twenties budget. We are increasing our pavement preservation spending to one point two million dollars this year. In, in the fiscal year twenties budget, it was one million. And Jack and his team were able to, or weren't able to spend all of that pavement preservation money this year. So we're going to carry over about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So it would have been about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is about what we expect in the upcoming years without any sort of additional, additional tax increases. And then I believe the sales tax initiative is.
Yeah, so we wanted, we did want to cover, obviously, we, we know and see what's happening with, with kind of taxes in general, what the feds, what the state have been saying. And so our, our effort and willingness to talk about any kind of increase in taxes, we've, we've talked about it and felt like we wanted to present that, that we, that the sales tax initiative that we have been discussing be delayed a year and, and taken to the voters in twenty twenty two. Twenty twenty two, in twenty twenty two instead of twenty twenty one. And so that, you know, obviously, we were looking for kind of what the temperature of the council was on, on that particular item. Like I said, we, we, we kind of know what's been happening at both the federal and state levels. And it's not something that I think anybody's wanting to, to rush out and talk about increase, any increases in taxes until we kind of see what a recovery looks like. So that's, that's where we are with the streets maintenance spot. So thoughts on that?
This is Mayor Miles, and I agree that this is not the year to take a sales tax initiative to the voters. I think there's been too much pain, too much suffering from unemployment, from businesses being hit. And I've thought about this a great deal too, because I know we were moving in that direction out of necessity to, or repairing our roads. But I think this is not the election cycle to do it. Having said that, I would point out that, that six hundred and fifty thousand is very minuscule for the need of our roads. That half a percent sales tax would have been, it would have been over four million this year. But instead, we are going to, we're going to do what we can for six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, needing six to seven million dollars a year to meet our objectives with the roads. I think that's really important. And, and it is, you know, really unfortunate, but it, it's a, it's a victim of the pandemic too, this year. And I, I, I think that I agree with you, this is not a time to take the tax initiative.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other thoughts?
Yeah, I would, I agree with you and, and the mayor. It's unfortunate, I don't know how our streets are going to make it another two years. And I can't imagine what it, the cost is going to go up to, the annual need, by putting it off for two more. So it's a really unfortunate situation, but I agree. We cannot go to the taxpayers right now and, and ask them to vote for this. It, it's just, it's just not an appropriate time, so. It's really unfortunate, I wish there was another solution, but our streets are expensive, and we need another source of revenue for them.
Yeah, I, I will, I appreciate that, Councilor Staley. I, I'll just tell you that Tina and I talked about this multiple times over the last couple of months. I, we've talked to Jack and Rob about it. And it, you know, it kind of makes you sick to your stomach, honestly, to know that, that every year that goes by, the, the amount of unfunded liability, that the cost of that goes up dramatically. I appreciate you pointing that out, it's actually exponential. But again, in looking at revenues, looking at what the economy's saying, just the appetite, I, I think we would be setting ourselves up for failure.
Ron, this is Vice Mayor Lingifelter. I would hope that the city would take the opportunity over this next two years to really drive that point home with, with infographics, with public information, to the point where people are sick of hearing about it, and, and they get it, really get it in two years. You know, I think there's an opportunity to educate over and over and over again, just hammer that message in for the next two years. So you do go out, you'll have a really high chance of something passing.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And we have, we have been talking about how, what new videos, you know, we, we've done some, some good videos in the past. The, one of the things that we've been talking about is, is doing some new ones, as well as, you know, how, how can we market this to more people? You know, I want to point back to the citizen survey, where we had four hundred citizens point out to us, you know, it wasn't us saying, hey, citizens, there's something wrong with our local roads. They, they actually identified that themselves. Ninety percent of those four hundred people said that the street infrastructure was important and needed to be looked at, looked at. So there, you know, people are starting, if, if they weren't getting it, they're certainly getting it now. And with, with an additional push to give, give them, you know, here's the information over and over again to, in ad nauseam, I think that the community as a whole will, will want to make that change as, as, as a group, so.
You know, you could even do some, some billboard advertising and things like that. I know that there's a lot of billboards on any divine over by a Swanee's dealership, so.
There are, and we'll also, when we get to the Capital Projects Fund, I, I'll talk to you a little bit more about the idea, so.
You know, Ron, I'd like to request that once a year, we do see Jack's presentation. He has such great tools to really show what the cost is and how it goes up. It's super informative, and I just think that the council and the public need to be very aware of those costs going up and what they are every single year. So I personally would like to request seeing that once a year, every year.
Well, I, I'd like to see it twice a year, to be completely honest with you, and maybe quarterly. So, yeah, you'll, you'll get it once a year, I promise you that. So it, but when you get it more, you, you'll know that, that we're, what, what we're doing.
I'm sure Jack would love to give us that report.
You know, it's funny, I actually think the guy dreams about roads, so.
He does.
We laugh about that, but I actually think that he, he would love to do it, so. Thank you for that. We, we laugh about that, but I actually think that he, he would love to do it. So, thank you for that. All right, um, budget highlights for the enterprise funds. Um, of course, a, a, as you all know, the, the small businesses, uh, that we run, water, sewer, garbage, and, um, working on stormwater, these, these are businesses. Uh, they're a little less impacted, um, by, by the pandemic. Uh, you know, of course, you can always expect a, a little bit of, um, non-payment or late payment type activity. Um, but the, these areas are a little less hit. They, they tend to be a lot more stable. Most because people need, you know, um, and pay for, does, uh, one point six, uh, uh, percent. Where we are estimating a slight decrease in twenty one. Uh, the real April downturn, uh, we were six one, six point one percent. Uh, and as I indicated, uh, we are expecting twenty one, just to be uh, you know, we, a slight decrease in there. Uh, we are, we have been, as, as you all are aware, we've been working on a water rate study for quite some time. Um, and that we will, uh, that restructuring is, is much needed. Um, and we will have that for you, uh, that rate study in the summer. Of course, we've, in a, cause any kind of increase in the budget, uh, giving the council the option to have that increase, uh, going to, uh, the next fiscal year. That will be to be determined at that time. Uh, under, um, wastewater or sewer, same, same kind of thing. Um, we, you know, we were doing well with, um, sewer, uh, rate growth. And, um, we are again expecting a little bit of decline, uh, very minor. And then the other part of the sewer, the sewer connection assistance program funding is included in, at, uh, the fifty thousand dollars, something that we've, we've tried to do, uh, every year. Appreciate, uh, our effort to help customers that, that need to utilize that help. Uh, so we left that in there, felt that that was important. Um, and then under solid waste, um, much, much like water and sewer, uh, we were, we were growing at a, at a small but steady rate. Uh, estimates are showing in a slight decrease. Uh, the, the big part of this, what we've already talked about is the solid waste, uh, rate study. Um, and we've, so we've talked about that. And then, of course, the final one is stormwater. Uh, we're in the process of a rate study that, uh, will be, uh, completed in twenty one. Uh, of course, that rate study, uh, we're, we're hoping for some stormwater fees as part of that. Uh, we're not proposing that for twenty one again. Um, probably adopting some fees that wouldn't go into effect until twenty two. It's kind of where we're, we're at with that. Um, the budget highlights for the airport.
Ron, this is Vice Mayor Lingatelter. I'm sorry to interrupt. Um, isn't the, isn't the, uh, the powerhouse is, is basically a small business that the city's running too? Is that correct?
Uh, we don't run it as an enterprise fund. Um, it, uh, sits out there as a special service or, uh, what do we call it? Special, yeah, special revenue fund where it does. Uh, enter, enterprise funds are funds that, um, run and can operate without any help. Um, and then special revenue funds are used by governmental agencies where they generate some revenue and then reply, and need a fairly substantial transfer from generally the general fund to, to operate. So that's the difference is that, uh, an enterprise fund is expected to run and support itself at least at a break even. Special revenue funds are those that they may generate some revenue, but need, uh, they need revenue, you know, above and beyond what they can generate. So that's, that's, that's the difference.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, uh, airport. So, um, airport revenues, um, you know, it's not a lot different. We're, you know, one of the things that I do want to point out about the airport before we, we go into it, and Tina and I talk about this all the time, is the rare, the airport continues to be somewhat of a challenge in that we don't have historical data on, on the revenue. And we do not have really any historic data on the expenditures, which continue to make it somewhat a challenging, uh, fund to, um, to budget for. Uh, you know, these other, these other, um, funds that we're looking at, these other departments have years of data and you can see trend lines in them. You know, we just don't have that for the airport. We, we continue to do our best. After we, after we get a few more years under our belt with the airport, we'll be much, much better at this. Um, just, just want to put that out there is it continues just to be a little bit of a challenge trying, trying to, to work on a budget that we don't have a lot of historic data on. Um, the, the airport, uh, for twenty twenty one, the reoccurring operating revenues are predicted to be down, uh, just about five percent or around fifty four thousand dollars. Um, primary lease. So, yeah, so the leasing revenue, that really is one, one, one client that we have. Cassie, um, is expected to be down, um, about thirteen percent or, uh, uh, around a hundred and eleven thousand dollars. Um, for the, but, you know, for the end of fiscal twenty. The bright or brighter news there, for at least for Keeman, it's not bright news for the airline industry, is that we have, we have a great opportunity to park planes at our airport. We've seen that over the years. And so basically what we're seeing is that the airlines are taking jets out, out of commission, off the flight lines, and they're looking for places to park them. Uh, I think you recall an email that I sent out that we were featured in a magazine article on this issue. Um, and so we've been working with Cassie to add and firm up additional parking for these, for these planes that are coming off the flight lines. And, um, so we are expecting revenue that was declining to actually increase in twenty twenty one. We've already had, I think, um, Gary and Steven reported that there had been, um, at least ten jets, um, come in over the last week or so, um, and start being parked for long-term storage. And, uh, what happens to those after, um, not exactly sure. Um, we have our long-term leases, that all of those are under contract in place. Those all have a three percent increase in them. We, we are still, um, Gary and his team are working with a consultant on the, the month-to-month leases. Uh, that rate study is, um, being done, um, as well. We have, in, in the budget, we have, uh, one-time revenue of two hundred thousand dollars in land sales included. Um, you know, we've got a lot, I, I think it's probably worth pausing right here to say that we've had an uptick in the last month on inquiries into our industrial park property, um, which is really exciting. Uh, you know, so that, that, of course, is good for the airport. Uh, but right now, we're looking at about two hundred K in land sales. Um, commercial, the commercial airline parking that we've, that I just talked about, so I jumped ahead a little bit, but that equates to, we've included about, uh, four hundred and eighty nine thousand dollars for that. Um, on the expenditure side, of course, the, the, the ultimate biggie that's, that we've been talking about and dealing with is the draw site. Um, of, you know, how that ends up, not exactly sure. We, I don't think anybody knows or when it, when the cleanup's going to start, but we always try to, uh, be ready for that. And when, when the fed, feds finally decide to move forward, um, we want to make sure that we have our part included in that. Um, and then we have an increase in contingency of six hundred and fifty thousand, um, which would be used for non-recurring, uh, revenues.
Basically for the land sale.
Oh, that's for the land sales, yes, sorry, for the land sales, so.
Ron, I've got a question. This is Vice Mayor Lingatelter. Um, not, not that this, the commercial storage isn't a good revenue stream. I think that's, that's good. But I think everybody on council, we all, I mean, the airport that we have here is so much more and has so much more potential than just a parking lot, you know? Um, so many new things that you could do to do, um, new airport-generated revenue sources. I mean, you could do public-private, uh, development agreements for new hangars. Um, you could go out and, and try to attract new aviation businesses. You could, um, look at running a, a fixed-based operation or, you know, some of these things. Be more aggressive and, and creating more opportunities to create more airport-generated revenue sources. I don't see, I don't see that happening right now. So.
Well, yeah.
Need to really drive our potential.
Well, I know, as, as I know you and I have exchanged a few emails. Um, Gary and his team, I'll just say, Steve and Bennett are, are continually talking with folks, not only about the industrial park and the activities there, but also about what, what can happen inside, I'll say, inside the fence. And, yeah, Cassie, Cassie's been, i- has been a wonderful, um, client. A rev, you know, a steady revenue stream. Obviously, with economic development, there's three things that you look at. You look at retention, how do you keep the business there? How do you expand it? Right? And when, once you have those businesses, how do you get them to grow? And then the last one is attraction. And in the economic development world, you, you, you plan on ex, the attraction being less than ten percent, and you plan on the retention and expansion being at least ninety percent. Um, so you're, you're absolutely right. We, we need to be cognizant of that. I think the work that we're doing with the, the master plan and the, the efforts there, the efforts that we've made to improve the, the, kind of the, the, I don't want to call it the terminal space, but the, the pilot's lounge, the cafe area. You know, if we, when we get people to fly in and look at our space, that's, you know, that's part of that makeup of, you know, you just never know when someone's going to fly in that's a CEO and go, hey, this, this is, this is a friendly, inviting place. It looks cool. I want to do business here. So I, I will say that we are, we are looking for those opportunities. Uh, we're currently, uh, like I said, we're trying to help Cassie expand and be able to take more, more planes. They, you know, that bird in the hand kind of thing. But I, I will tell you that Steve and Bennett are cognizant of that and, and, and are, um, entertaining any ideas that, that are any calls of interest. So.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I, I do have a, a concept of how economic development works. Uh, and I know that it's nice to have those amenities, but have, has, have you thought about maybe putting out a, some sort of a request for information or, or some sort of a public procurement process? Looking for maybe like a public-private development, um, agreement for new hangars? Um, partnering somebody to come in and, and build some new hangars that we could lease out, things like that?
So that has been talked about. I know in the, the, the master plan, um, that we're working on right now, that, you know, the, the layout and how those things happen on the airport property are important to, to have planned. And, um, that's, that is part of the concept that, that, uh, our consultant is looking at. And I think everything's been on the table, including, um, up and including, uh, campsites for people who want to fly in and, and camp. So, I mean, that, those things, um, are being, are being talked about. And, you know, like I said, and when the master plan's done, I think there's going to be great opportunities to mark, even market the airport even more than what it is.
Yeah, that was my next question. I mean, we, we've been running, the city's been running the airport since, I think, May of eighteen. And I haven't seen any marketing or advertising of our airport. Um, and that's a sore spot with me. I mean, we need to really market and advertise what we have.
Okay, yep. Don't disagree.
Not more to be done. Thank you.
You bet. Any other questions?
You know, I just have one, uh, comment, since we're having this conversation. Our airport right now is set up to where it's more successful when the economy's in the, in the tink, you know, in the tank, whatever, however.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, you know, so things are down. Our airport's doing well, but when the economy is doing well, our airport starts going down because, you know, the planes aren't being parked there anymore. And we need, we need to have some kind of plan for offsetting that. And we're, um, we're gonna see more land sales in the future. It would be nice to have a shovel-ready plan so that when the, um, income is there from selling a, a piece of property that we can invest right away and get that going so that we do have that balance. Cause there isn't a balance out there now, and that's the concern.
Yeah, yeah. No, you're, you're absolutely right. And, you know, land, land sales are, are important, and it's important that we've planned for them. So, I mean, you're absolutely right. And, you know, these one-off, you know, we're gonna have a land sale. Oh, boy, now we have some money. Needs to be, we have this project, when we get the money, we can put it there. So, I mean, that's absolutely correct. Okay, operating budgets. Um, I, I guess this, you know, we've been at this now for over an hour and a half. Uh, if we could take a, a break, uh, for ten minutes, would that be okay with everybody? So, uh, we'll get started back up at ten fifty-two. Okay, funds up. Thanks, Mayor. I'll be back.
Ron, you're muted.
I think you're muted, Ron.
All right, I think Annie unmuted me. Sorry about that. Thank you for the break. I was just telling Annie that as soon as the governor had announced that hair salons could reopen on Friday, the words just barely left his mouth. And I sent the lady that does my hair a text hoping to get this mop cleaned up. And I just got a text from her during the break. And she said, how's the 18th? And I'm looking at the calendar going, oh, my gosh, the 18th. I'm going to look like some kind of beatnik hippie guy. So, anyway. Well, welcome back, everybody. I don't see everybody in their seats, but we did say 10:52. I, I will just assume that everybody can hear what we're saying. So we will push forward. So let's move into the operating budgets. Just as a reminder, one of the things that we ask the departments to do is if they have a section of their budget that is going to change by 10%, plus or minus 10%, that there's an explanation provided. And so we, we've held to that and we have, we'll call them the highlights or the explanations for all of the departments in their operating budgets. Just so everybody knows, what we basically asked the departments to do for 2021 is to look at reducing their, their spending out of their operating budgets and out of their capital requests. What, what we said to each department was that if, if they had positions that were unfilled or that they could live without for 2021, that that, that would count, we would use that as their reduction in their budget also. So the feeling was that if, if they had been without that employee, been able, unable to fill that position, that they probably could continue to maintain the services that they were providing, albeit maybe a little bit more difficult without those positions. So, yes, Ms. Tina.
I was just going to say, if you get to city council, the long budget highlight was pasted by me, so.
Tina, Tina is telling me that the first, the first one that we're going to get to is the city council and that we have not the correct information. So the correct information is that the recommended budget reflects a 4.3% increase, not a 2.6% decrease. And then from my sheet that Tina handed me, this is part of the actual budget document, that personnel costs increased 10.2% and that included the 20 budget health insurance coverage for three council members. And the recommended budget has coverage for four council members. If, if people, if the council members decide to select that. The increase in internal services is across the board. And it is due to revision in the insurance services allocation methodology. So that, that is different than what you're seeing on the page, but it is what's within the budget document itself. So that, there you go. Thank, thank you, Ms. Tina. So, I mean, overall, the city council's budget is, is very small. As you recall, the council had, in an effort to keep up with what is happening in our, our region with, with our sister cities and really across the state, the stipend, and that's really what I will, I mean, we've called it wages or an increase in, in pay. It's really a stipend for your, for the councils and the mayor's service is proposed as an increase. The councils approved that. I, I will just say that I, I think as elected officials that volunteer a great deal of your time to this community, that it's a small, it's a small portion for the, for the city to pay that stipend and the benefits that go with it. And it is, we are not doing anything wildly different, or I wish I could say, I, I like to be innovative. But this is an industry standard and is being done in, and for our elected officials in our neighboring cities and across the state. The city manager's budget, I have in my budget a slight decrease of 2.6%. Really, again, I have a very small budget. And the one thing that I need to take care of when Colleen was hired, she was hired at a grade 214 and she agreed to be an exempt employee. She's, we've lived with that for as long as we can. It's actually would be, it's much more appropriate for her as an exempt employee to be at grade 222, which is kind of where our, our exempt employees mostly, for the most part, start. She's doing a great job. And so that increase in personnel reflects that reclassification. And then one of the things that we're proposing to do this year, I don't necessarily like it, but in an effort to try to save some money, is that we would not do the national citizen survey for this year, but pick it up again in 2022. I, I, I found it to be very useful, but I think we can go a year with, without it and, and pick it up in, again in 2022. So that's, that's my budget. And if, if anybody has any questions, just jump in and, and stop me. If I don't hear from people, I will just keep moving forward. Okay, city attorney. The city attorney's recommended budget reflects a 9.7% decrease. We, we do and have been working this year on kind of, I, I will say fixing our assistant city prosecutors in, in their, in their grades. And we, we really need to get them, I think, in a better spot to make sure that we can retain them over time. We've, we've had excellent prosecutors. And some good news as part of this is that Carl's been able to identify another prosecutor to replace the one that we've, we've been without for now over six months. So that's good news. We are anticipating a decrease in outside legal services, just kind of based on, on the downturn and, and kind of wrapping up or getting close to wrapping up some fairly substantial projects, agreements, AKA Kingman Crossing and Rancho Santa Fe. So we're hoping to see a decrease there. Internal services decrease is in regards to reduction in IT allocation. So not, not too much wild happening in Carl's area, but those are the highlights. Annie and Melinda, their budget, again, very small. They are seeing a decrease of 16.6% in their 2021 budget. There, they did have a cost increase in, in the staffing mid-year 20 with me being able to take Annie away from Tina. Woo, it's a win for me. She found a gray replacement. So it worked out for both departments. But we're, we're really grateful to have Annie. And she's bringing a level of professionalism to the clerk's office that I just, I, I love and I really appreciate it. So, and I know Annie's listening. Thank you, Annie. And then we have, of course, we've been working for the last year on implementation of document managing system. This would, this eventually will take us to a paperless system that, that we absolutely need. And we are, we are working on, we have worked on that for 20. And, and I think we'll see benefits for, for that as we move forward over the years to come. Under courts, so Judge Singer, we've, we've worked closely with Judge Singer on his budget. on his budget. Uh, his budget has, uh, an eight point six percent decrease. He is actively working, I would say, almost daily for the judge on how he can provide the best court system with the, with the least amount of expenses. Um, as, and, and still, you know, getting the justice dispensed and having people feel like they've been treated fairly, uh, through our court system. And so, um, the court, uh, is utilizing the, the, the failed to pay program. It's, it's led to a reduction in jail fees. And, um, and, and that's really kudos to him. A decrease in just services and supplies that he's been able to identify also has been very helpful. Internal service increase, um, there is, you know, there are increases in insurance service allocation methodology. Um, had caused a little bit of an increase. Uh, that is within, um, the judge's control. I think he wishes it was, but it's not.
Senator Foggan?
Yes, Mayor.
Uh, this is really a question about the org chart more than the budget. But in the budget book, the city council shows the city magistrate with a dotted line versus the straight line to you and to the city attorney.
Yes.
It's not because it's a matrix, uh, but, and if it is, I'm, uh, because we have the same hiring and contract approval and, uh, you know, yearly review of, of the judge.
Yes.
Uh, so I was just wondering why it was shown as a dotted line. Sorry, my allergies.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know that, that probably needs to be a solid line, Mayor.
I think so too, so.
We'll just make it a solid one.
Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate you pointing that out. I, I actually looked at that and missed it, so appreciate that. All right, uh, economic development. Um, now Gary's, don't ask any really hard questions. I think Tina and I can answer everything, but Gary's doing the radio show right now. But, um, the budget highlights for economic development. Uh, the recommended budget reflects a thirteen percent decrease. Um, personnel cost decrease, uh, due to restructuring, uh, that happened in 2020. As you all know, um, Gary, uh, in his position was re- responsible for overseeing plant, the planning aspects of our business. And that is now being handled by Chris Young. And that seems to have worked out well, actually extremely well in that, that Gary's been able to spend more time in ED stuff. And Chris has done a great job, uh, with planning. Um, so there's, um, one of the bigger things that, that, uh, we did in 20 that reflects in 2021. The other thing I just want to make sure that we point out is that, that we transition Sylvia out of the planning department um, and into the role of economic development specialist in retail and commercial. And just wanted to just say that, that Sylvia is doing a great job. There's still a little bit of transition, uh, work that's being done between planning and, and, and what she's doing with ED. But that, that grows smaller and smaller every day. Um, and so just really liking how that, that's gone and the emphasis on, on our retail and commercial side. Under supplies and services, there's a decreased, um, reduction in marketing materials. Uh, this, this will actually change as we transition this, the, that, the money that was in that one specific line item or those two specific line items, facade grant and, and the, and what we're doing with the recovery, uh, money. Um, so that it actually, it won't be a thirteen percent decrease. It will actually be an increase, um, just so everybody knows. We, we will redo the math and it will show an increase. Um, as far as internal services, there's, um, there's a decrease in, um, building maintenance. Uh, we've, I think we've gotten the ED team situated over at the powerhouse. It's great space. If you haven't, well, probably you haven't been over there since it was done, since we've been in lockdown, but it is absolutely great space. And, um, you know, Sylvia, the, um, our Vista person and Bill Schilling are over there and they've got great space to work from and, and, um, eventually meet with people. And, and so we're, of course, that project's now, um, complete. So we see a decrease there. Um, and then capital outlay wise, uh, the, the purchase of the vehicle, uh, will not be required. So that's, that accounts for all, all of the ED stuff. Like I said, uh, when we readjust that facade and economic, uh, program stuff, this, this, this one will definitely be up, not, not down, so. Under tourism, uh, tourism, of course, we're taking a huge hit in tourism. Um, and again, the money that we're seeing in that one line item under capital, uh, will be brought back in to this. So that decrease, not exactly sure what that'll end up being. I, I'm looking at Ms. Tina. Yeah, yeah, just, it, it won't, obviously it won't be sixteen one point one percent. But under personnel costs, one of the things that, that Gary, Josh and I have met with, um, and talked about is a reclassification of the administrative assistant. What they're asking this person to do and what we're asking them to do moving forward is going to require them to, to do and, and be involved in, in much more of the, I will say, the operations of the powerhouse. Um, and one of the things, one of the key items, um, is helping Josh in trying to attract, uh, people to Kingman. And that, you know, obviously we've been working on tour bus stuff that clearly is going to be out a little ways. Um, but, um, a bigger push on how we're attracting and how we're, uh, marketing is, is going to be put onto the, to this person. Uh, kind of as the administrative assistant, some of that was already, in 2020 was already starting to happen. Um, but we've really looked at that and adding, we think the person, we, well, we don't think, we know the person that has that, uh, that position now is capable of that. We just want to make sure that the job description covers all the things that we will be asking her to do now, moving forward. We also, um, we, of course, we've talked about this. Uh, the tourism activity will be down. Um, a big portion of the cost of the powerhouse was the inventory that we were carrying. Obviously, it, with less visitors, we will not need as much inventory. Hope, you know, hopefully that doesn't last very long. But that we're, we did decrease, uh, our expectation for inventory purchasing for 2021. And then, um, just a reduction in supplies and services. Um, fewer people in the building means less supplies and services needed. And then finally, under capital outlay, a decrease, uh, due to the completion, uh, which I've already covered under, um, the, the, kind of the renovations of the powerhouse. And, um, a good news thing, the entry sign will, will be done. Uh, we're excited, it should be up this week. And we're looking forward to planning a lighting ceremony, virtual, um, lighting ceremony. Uh, hopefully, uh, in the next, next week or so. So stay tuned for that.
Ron, that sign is wonderful, very eye-catching. I think it's gonna be all over Instagram. You know, it, it's gonna be a great addition. Um, one thing I wanted to ask about on tourism is where we're at with the Andy Devine days. Um, big, the shutting down the street celebration and parade. Are, are we talking about, could be canceled or scaled back or, or yet?
Well, I, I, we anticipate it being scaled back. One of the things you, I mentioned it earlier in the presentation is that we, we are trying to do two things. We're trying to do two things with, with the celebrations. And, uh, the first thing is that we are trying to transition the Andy Devine days. Am I breaking up? Do you hear me break?
I can hear you.
Okay, for some reason, once in a while, we get weird feedback. And so I, I, I don't know what that's all about. Um, we're trying to transition Andy Devine days to a chamber of commerce and a downtown, um, event where we're, we're playing a support role. And we, you heard me already mention it. We would like to focus our tourism dollars on a bigger Route sixty-six celebration event. So that we keep our local event where we're still supporting and helping, but playing a, a smaller role. And then we're doing a much bigger kind of invite to the region, to the, to the nation and ultimately to the world to come visit Route sixty-six. And so that's, that transition that you kind of heard me reference with the Route sixty-six celebration is where I'd like, I'd like us to get to. I think we can do it. I think there's appetite for it. I know there's, I've had conversations with people in the downtown and just people that are interested in us. I, I think emphasizing the importance of Route sixty-six to the community and to the region. So that's, that's kind of how we're, we're seeing this transition. Of course, we, we don't want to see Andy Devine, um, die off. The event has been, I think, that our citizens look forward to it. Every community needs a local celebration. Every community that I've lived in has had it, whether it's Crazy Days or the Roundup or Fun Days or whatever, you know, or Andy Devine Days, whatever it is. That local event needs to continue. I think there is a draw, you know, but the draw isn't necessarily, hey, I'm planning to go to Kingman to go to the Andy Devine days. It's, I'm visiting, oh, there's a parade, that, this is awesome, Americana. I can see a piece of Americana with this local parade and stuff. But it's not, people are not driving or coming to Kingman to participate in the Andy Devine Day celebration. So handing that off to our, I think, our chamber and playing a support role really, I think, makes much more sense. And then trying to capitalize on Route sixty-six and the celebration there makes even that much more sense. So that's kind of where we are with, with those. Honestly, uh, over the next couple of weeks and the next couple of months, we'll be watching for the gatherings, kind of where those end up. Uh, we want to return to celebrating and having First Fridays and, and all those things as, as soon as we can. Of course, being responsible is a big part of that and following the guidelines that, that the federal government and the, and the governor are providing is part of that too. But we're still, we're still planning these events, um, to, to take place.
Thank you.
You betcha.
Ron, I have a quick question regarding tourism budget. Um, under supplies and services, um, what portion of that is, is the tourism and advertising marketing budget for twenty-one?
Uh, we will, I, we will look that up right now. Ms. Tina's got her computer in front of her and she will tell you exactly what that is.
Thank you.
I will tell you that under the, kind of that recovery budget, um, kind of an advertising campaign that, that we've envisioned is, is looking like it would be approximately fifty to sixty thousand dollars. Um, that's possibly some, some, um, produced, uh, video, um, as well.
Do we know what it was last year? Sorry, this is, uh, David Wade.
Yeah, we, we, when we, when we look at the one number, we can tell you what the other one is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good, good follow.
Let's see, I see adding happening, so just one second.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. It's a good question, good question.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, Council Waits' question is good too. The, the percentage increase or decrease of that advertising and marketing budget over, over the last fiscal year or the current fiscal year would be good to know too.
Right. There's, yeah, the advertising's broken out. The reason it's just, it's not just one line item. There's, um, there's a few line items that need to be added up. So just bear with us for just a second. Sorry for the. Are you ready? All right, Ms. Tina has the numbers. For 2020, uh, the budget number or the budgeted numbers were?
For advertising and marketing, a hundred and twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and thirty for twenty. And for twenty-one, a hundred and eighteen thousand nine hundred and ninety. It results in a seven percent decrease.
Plus the sixty?
I haven't included anything.
So, so plus fifty to sixty is, uh, increase of forty thousand dollars.
So, Man, Andrew Foggan, to follow up on that, it, it's your intent to take, um, fifty or sixty thousand out of what's currently listed under the CIP, under the Economic Recovery Program and program that into, um, 2021 tourism, advertising, marketing?
Yes.
Okay, um, awesome. I have one more question for Tina, if she's still around.
She's still, he's, I'm not letting her go.
Yeah, you better hold on to her.
She's going to her desk.
Last, last year I asked, um, about the powerhouse fund and we talked about how it's slowly being exhausted. Um, and there's gonna come a point when the general fund is gonna have to major, you know, pick that up. Um, with the downturn in COVID and reduced sales, um, I'm just curious as to what her prediction is, uh, as far as what fiscal year will the city council and the, and the administration have to, um, pick that up? When will the powerhouse fund be exhausted? What fiscal year will that happen?
Great question. We actually have that, we have that for you. Go ahead, Ms. Tina.
So it will still be, so we did talk in, in, uh, January. I believe we had said it would be twenty-five or twenty-six fiscal year. Based on all of the reforecasted numbers from that point, it will definitely be, well, at this point, it will be in fiscal year twenty-five. And it will be, uh, a majority of the powerhouse fund will be subsidized by the general fund.
Got it, got it. Um, just to build on that, um, as far as we're creating new revenue opportunities out of the powerhouse, um, have we looked, I know we talked about maybe doing, uh, tour bookings out of the powerhouse. Um, maybe some other, um, revenue generating things, like a little cafe or, or like a coffee shop. Um, especially the tour booking. Have we looked at that, um, over the last fiscal year?
Yeah, so, uh, we've spent some, I know that Josh and, or I guess I should credit Gary in that too. Gary and Josh have, have talked about, you know, what ultimately we can do with tour buses. What ultimately we can sell as packages to, you know, i- is there something that we can do that could value added that we could charge for? I, I will tell you that the, that we have dust and I will, uh, and say that we are not, um, wanting to get into any kind of food services. What we're, uh, our goal at the powerhouse is to push people to go to our, the small businesses in the downtown and that coffee, money or restaurant. and that coffee money or restaurant money with our small businesses in the downtown. And um, so, you know, we're not and have not pursued offering a coffee shop because we've got a great coffee shop downtown. We and what we're doing is trying to push people to the downtown to utilize those. So, I mean, I think you're right about the the tour booking, the place where you come and you you buy your um, Grand Canyon amenities ticket that also gets you into Lake Mead State Park, you know, just something like that. Definitely rings true to to what we've talked about. But on the on the restaurant side of things, uh, we have we have not pursued that because we feel like the place to have that happen is the place where they're already doing it.
Yeah, I agree with that. Um, as as far as city buildings go, um, there aren't a lot of city buildings that can operate um, and do a business and may maybe come the closest possible to breaking even. I think the Powerhouse is the exception. I think the Powerhouse is a building where we could run it to try to try to strive to at least break even every year with what we're doing there. And I and I hope that the city would get to a point that they can do that. Um, the General Fund is already so stressed that it has to pick up what the Powerhouse Fund is picking up right now. I mean, it's just another
Yeah.
another burden.
Yeah, well, and you know, I I know that, you know, Gary and Josh are are aware of that. I know Josh has worked really hard to recognize that he needs to raise as much revenue as possible. We did during, you know, one of the things that we took advantage of o- over the last two months is re reworking the gift shop. You know, we know and recognize that that is a place to to generate or to cut into those um, subsidies that the Powerhouse um, is receiving from the General Fund and, you know, so looking at relooking at the inventory, how much inventory we're carrying, how it's marketed, all of that um, is is a big part of that. And, you know, we've we've shown good increases. What else can we do? I think there's, I think there are opportunities, and we need to keep looking for them. When you when you designate a big portion of the space to to a museum, you you're going to subsidize museums. I mean, that's just kind of the way they go. Um, you know, what it, you know, one of the things that this community is very, very short on, to be completely honest with you, are meeting spaces, uh, con additional conference rooms or larger, I'll say maybe larger conference rooms. So maybe being able to take advantage of the upstairs conference rooms and and make that um, rentable space. Um, all all those things, I know that Josh and Gary are talking about. And recognizing that twenty twenty five, well, was twenty twenty six, now twenty twenty five, of having uh, all entire subsidy from the General Fund or a much bigger portion, it is a great concern and are things that are 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 being looked at, so.
Well, I know that um, museums create traffic, and and that traffic buys stuff in the gift shops. So those are good things. Um, there is some underutilized space still upstairs in the in the Powerhouse um, across the way from the meeting rooms. Um, what's the plan for that space? I mean, we need to, I think, not have any any underutilized space in the in the Powerhouse, you know?
So we we have the, are you referring to the office space that Sylvia and?
No, so if you go upstairs, you go up the stairs, and then um, on your on your right hand side, there's two conference rooms. And then there's the door for the museum, and there's the restroom. And there's a little walk through exhibit on the left hand side, and then there's a door that you can go through, a couple of doors, I think, and there's some space there. I don't think we're using that for anything right now. I don't know what the plan is.
Yeah, that that's the office space that Sylvia and the Vista
Oh, okay.
are in, yeah. And I think Josh has an office up there now, and they've they've opened where he was downstairs for for the team to do their work in.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, appreciate the question. Like I said, we we when we get this this completely lifted, it'd probably be a great idea for us to just give a little um, tour to the council. Um, uh, so you can see, get a feel for the renovations, because it's 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 renovations are are great and uh, very, um, very nice, so.
Yeah, on the downstairs floor, I mean, you could have a whole counter for for tour booking or helicopter booking or all sorts of different stuff. Bike tours, monolith gardens, the wall pies, all of it.
Yeah, there's definitely room for for that kind of activity downstairs, for sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
Ron, just real quick, Councilman Staley.
Gary, you're back.
You only saw part of the sign. The the rest of the sign uh, will come up when it's actually installed, so you only saw a piece of it, so uh, yeah, I I'm as excited as you are. I I think it's going to be one of those wow. It it's got a lot of wow factors to it.
Just what I saw sitting on the ground was a wow, so I can't wait. Thank you for that.
I've seen it lit up at night now when he was when he was uh, testing it, and yeah, it'll it'll blow your socks off.
Awesome.
So don't put socks on when you come and look at it. All right, thank you, Gary. Thank you, everybody. Um, all right, airport. Um, so the recommended uh, budget for the airport is is a forty six point three percent decrease. Um, there's, you know, the really, this has to do with much bigger projects um, that just aren't aren't anticipated for this year. Obviously, the capital outlay, uh, due to the completion of the remodel, uh, we demolished a building that needed to be needed to be done as well. And um, a a vehicle that was much, much needed. Uh, I I also believe that there was some additional equipment that really is helping the airport. Uh, under, you know, just kind of other highlights, the, you know, we've we've been working on a website design by in over the next uh, couple of weeks, or at least the next month. Uh, that website will be fully populated. Uh, and so, of course, we won't be spending, having to spend money on a consultant for that. So, you know, the airport is um, again, it's one of those a little bit more difficult um, budgets to build, um, because we just don't have a lot of history. And so we get these dramatic increases and decreases because projects come along, and then when they're done, um, that we see a large decrease. So, uh, but as far as just kind of, you know, personnel, uh, services, supplies, that kind of thing, uh, pretty, pretty, pretty stable there, so.
Ron, this is um, this is the one place where you can still find grant money all the time, and then they call and say, hey, we have even more grant money. Do you want any?
Yeah.
So my question is, is that is will uh, will we be able to jump on those opportunities? Is there enough room in this budget that if um, a hundred thousand or two hundred thousand comes available and it needs a one percent match? Um, will will we be able to do that?
I would say yes. Uh, we've been able to do that. We've lit, we've left some money in reserves to be able to try to do that. The, you know, what's what's been interesting about the airport and the grants that are associated with the with the airport is that, yeah, they they have these weird runoff matches. Um, with the pandemic, the it's been interesting that there's been this, all of a sudden, hey, here's sixty nine thousand dollars, tell us what project you can do, kind of thing. And so, yeah, it's been, it's been really important to keep a little bit of money and contingency to ma- to do any kind of matching. Luckily, the last couple of of grants that we've gotten, uh, that sixty nine thousand one didn't have a match requirement, and they removed our match requirement for the runway project. So, you know, some good news uh, as well. But yeah, there's there's some money to to capture grant matching uh, when when uh, we get surprised by one.
That's great. The other question I had for you is, um, maybe not now as we're cutting back, but eventually, does the airport need to have a project manager to oversee all these big projects that come through that are funded by grant money? They're long term, they're kind of complicated.
I would say absolutely, because the the paperwork, yeah, as you know, working with it's it's a it's a wonderful thing, working with the federal government. But the number of requests and information that they can ask for is enough to choke a goat. So I I I would say that 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 person or the what work is being done, it it would be never ending.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Ron, this is Vice Neiling Infelter. I have a question under supplies and services.
Uh huh.
Um, again, for Tina, for fiscal year twenty one, um, is there an airport advertising and marketing budget included in that? In the amount?
Checking.
Thank you. Six thousand dollars?
Six thousand in a dedicated line, and then they have professional and technical line, too. So they also have a professional and technical item that that would account for
Fifteen for consulting for consulting and marketing.
Yeah, fifteen for consulting and marketing. So upwards of twenty one thousand.
So um, fifteen for the airport professional consultant that the city hired? Is that correct?
Yes.
Uh huh. What what was the name of that firm again?
I don't think they've, I don't think they've hired anybody yet.
I thought it was like airport specialists or something like that. Maybe I'm wrong.
No.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no.
I thought they had already identified a firm to work with, but um, my other question for you, Ron, is um, goes back to your discussion on the development fees for the city.
Yes.
Uh, I think right now is the is the ideal time for the city. While we're going through the FAA process to release eight hundred acres to annex that Phase Two land, that eight hundred acres. It's raw land right now. It's vacant. If you annex that, then you can start assessing development fees on that property while it develops and builds up.
Yeah.
I mean, that'd be, that would be, uh, it seems like a good idea.
Um, so the, I guess that brings it to the old age old debate about one time revenue versus ongoing revenue. Um, you know, the impact fees would be awesome to have. There is absolutely no disagreement there. The the challenge is that adding the property is adding service area without any revenue collection tied to it. And as it as it stands now, that property will generate sales ta- or sales ta- uh, property tax for the county, and a big portion of that is utilized for NACFED fire service, and they would be being paid for providing service to that area. And if we annex it, we would get one time impact fee revenue, but ongoing revenue unless they on that eight hundred acres generate sales tax, uh, it would be just another eight hundred acres to supply services to. So that that's that's the age old, uh, I'll say the age old debate.
Um, was there a difference um, between requirements for public services between residential and industrial? I I don't know. I mean, I know that um, to just bury your head in the sand is not a good strategy, I don't think. You know, I think that it'd be great to have a development revenue fee, and and hopefully um, your fire district legislation will go through in in one of the fiscal years ahead. And and it would solve that problem.
Absolutely. Yeah, I again, is, I I don't know that anybody's burying their head in the sand, but I I will say that um, you know, having a revenue source to provide services to is is really the the thing that we need to always continue to ask ourselves. Um, you know, if if NACFED is going to get paid to provide fire service, and we're just going to provide fire service and add it to our existing service levels, it that general fund revenue gets stretched that much further with without any direct compensation for it. If we had
Sure.
tax, this would, that would, it would be a no brainer. We would absolutely have annexed the airport property a long time ago.
So so to build upon that, um, let's say you annex it, let's say you, at at that point, you're able to assess development fees, but when there's nobody on the property, what's stopping the city from creating some sort of an improvement district on that property that would create some sort of a recurring revenue source?
So it's, I my understanding, based on our conversation, earlier conversations, that we're not allowed to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? I love the idea, by the way. I just wish there was a way that we could pay for additional services, because I I would love to have the airport inside the city.
Well, I know that the city has available to it all the special districts that are available under statute. You would think that one of one or some of those would be able to help the city to cover costs in Phase Two. I don't know.
Yeah, there ongoing revenue, just there's there's just appears to be no ongoing revenue sources that would help pay for services.
Isn't there a, okay, you're right. Unless the legislation goes through for fire.
Right, exactly right. Yep, and that's why, again, that's why this that piece of legislation is so important to the city. Because, you know, I I would much rather our our fire department be first responders to the airport and the industrial park. I I I mean, the level of professionalism in NACFED is going up because of our leadership um, contract with NACFED. But again, I I I want I want the airport and the industrial park to be tied directly to Kingman, and that would be the city boundaries. It would be inside it. But, I mean, the cost, what what NACFED fire service gets just from just from the airport is or the industrial park is over seven hundred thousand dollars in property tax to run to run it. So.
That's that's Phase One, though, right? I just think that there's an opportunity to do something a little differently that benefits the city in Phase Two, but.
Do you need to explore, if there's revenue opportunities and the ability to provide services and have those services covered? Uh, again, I I'll be, you know, we will be at the table for sure, a hundred percent.
Great, thank you, sir.
You betcha. All right, our next department is engineering. Um, engineering is seeing a five point five percent decrease in twenty twenty one. They have uh, personnel costs for a reclassification. They actually have two amazing engineering techs that have done some incredible work. We want to make sure that we hold on to these employees. Um, we've been talking about this for last year about needing to reclassify them, so that's in their budget. Um, they have a vacancy in engineering tech position that they will um, leave unfunded. Um, they they do need it, but um, they they've been living without it, and and Greg feels like they can continue to live live without it. Um, the capital outlay is seeing a decrease uh, with vehicles, and this goes to that um, conversation we had a little bit earlier about the the leasing program versus the outright paying cash program. And so we're, they're seeing a de- uh, decrease there. So that's engineering. Financial services, Ms. Tina. Ms. Tina's seen an increase now. Uh, there there is a slight increase uh, for the finance, financial services. Um, that's really due to personnel costs uh, with regards to some turnover. Um, that's really due to personnel costs, uh, with regards to some turnover and some changes in insurance, uh, for the, for her personnel. Other than that, it's, it's pretty much a break-even, um, budget for financial services. Utility billing and licensing, uh, reflects an 8% increase. Uh, really, the highlight here is that Supplies and Services are increasing due to what was, I think, a silver lining, uh, with regards to being close to the public is people have learned to do business with us online. And so we're, we're seeing more people take advantage of electronic payments. And that results in, of course, merchant fees going up. Uh, there is an increase in utility billing costs, just, um, based on our, that's our most recent quote from our, our billing vendor. Um, so that's, uh, that's utility billing. Uh, I actually, like I said, actually, that increase is good because it means people are learning how to use the online systems better. Uh, Fire Admin, uh, the Fire Admin budget, um, there's a few things in here that, that, um, I, I, I want to point out. I mentioned it earlier with regards to paying our PS PRS unfunded liability later, just to make sure that, um, we, we, we don't run into a snag with COVID and having to shut down again. But, um, the recommended budget, right as it currently stands, does not have the PS PRS payment in it. So the, if the PS PRS payment is included, the decrease is really only 4.7%. Uh, that's a long explanation for that, but I, I hope everybody understands that. Um, when we get towards the end of the fiscal year, we'll put that money into their budget and pay it, uh, their, what, their portion of it, anyway. Personnel costs are increasing. Uh, one of the things, uh, mentioned already is Community Development Division, uh, changes in '20. Um, but also there are, um, the, there's a couple of, um, fire, uh, additional firefighter positions that were awarded as part of the SAFER grant in there. Um, and so there is some movement in, in adding some personnel based on that grant. Um, did we also handle some of the, a little bit of compression in here?
Next sentence.
Oh, the next, I just need to get to the next sentence, sorry. Um, one of the things, uh, that I mentioned earlier, we talked about last year, continues to be on our minds and trying to, to work on, is our efforts, uh, to, to deal with compression issues within the department. Uh, that total fix that we were anticipating doing, it, this in 2021, added up to about $330,000. Obviously, we couldn't take all that on this year. Uh, so we, we made, we're making a, some slight adjustments just, just to have some forward momentum. Uh, that doesn't come to a whole bunch. I want to say it was about $70,000, um, of fixes. And we'll look to 2022 to finish that work, um, in the Fire Department. So, um, was, we were disappointed in that, um, but we do have plans to finish that. Uh, so that, again, is the right spot. Uh, Services and Supplies, uh, just cutbacks. Um, and, uh, just, uh, taking care of the vehicles. Obviously, we won't stop repairing and maintaining them, but making an effort to keep the cost down on those will be important for the Fire Department for this next year. And then, uh, capital outlay decrease, um, with regards to, they were able to replace a number of vehicles in this, in '20. Um, we are utilizing a couple of vehicles under the five-year, uh, capital lease program. So that's helping them, uh, decrease also. So that's Fire Admin. Under Fire Stations, uh, the recommended budget reflects a 23.7% decrease. Uh, and that's just credit to the chief for really just going through and, and cutting back. Uh, remember I said that if we hit a bump where we, we have a problem with, um, an air conditioning unit or something like that, uh, this is, this is probably a place where we would feel it. Um, because we cut, you know, the chief's cut this back to bare bones. And, um, and he feels like that, that's doable for a year. But any unexpected speed bump, uh, could, could ultimately affect this budget as, as well as others. Under Community Development, uh, of course, this is, um, under, uh, Fire Department authority now, um, with Chris Young leading the way on that. Uh, his budget has a 12.3% decrease. Um, the overall decrease on personnel is that there, they've, um, had, um, some movement. We've had some movement, I mentioned, with regards to changing, um, how we're doing economic development. And so there's a, there's a change there. Supplies and Services, um, you know, travel and training, we've already kind of talked about those. And we, um, we have been worried, we've talked, uh, you remember a couple of months ago, we went through, uh, the weed abatement, our efforts there. Uh, we do have $20,000, uh, mar, earmarked for, uh, weed abatement. Uh, we're, we're really hoping to not only deal with weeds, but stay ahead of them. This year has been particularly difficult with, with much more rain and then nice warm weather. You can almost measure the growth, um, in, in hours instead of days. So there's that. Um, Internal Services, again, you're, you'll see this throughout all the rest of the budgets as well as they're just insurance reallocation stuff. Um, there is a little bit in there for building maintenance. Uh, and kind of making the space better for some of our employees that are, have been living in not, not great space. It's not poor space, but it's not, it's not conducive to the work. Um, and then, um, capital outlay reduction to some software implementation, reaching completion. And then we have the, the vehicles that they drive are also we're utilizing the capital lease program for. Dispatch Center, um, the Dispatch Center is anticipating a 10.5% decrease. Uh, Personnel actually are, you're seeing an increase on, uh, just dealing with, uh, overtime and, uh, salary adjustments within the Dispatch Center personnel. Um, nothing dramatic, uh, but think, a couple of things that just need to be done. And, and overtime continues to be a little bit of an issue in the fact that it's, it's been hard and continues to be difficult to recruit our dispatchers. Um, and so when you're short on dispatchers, that means you're paying overtime, uh, unfortunately. Um, so we continue to recruit and hope to find and fill all the positions. Um, again, some of the decreased stuff are things that, that you would just guess, you know, just, um, things that you can cut back on, uh, and doing, uh, purchases. We purchased, did some purchasing earlier that won't need to roll over into 2021. Um, Internal Service stuff is just like you've been seeing. And then Capital Outlay was, is really a big portion of it, uh, due to the, the ability that we have this year to do radio console replacement, which was a really important piece. Um, the automatic, the automated dispatching alerting system project, uh, has been pushed to 2022, um, as we feel like we are meeting our call-out, um, times that we can do that for another year before having to actually put that in, into place. Human Resources and Risk Management, um, the human, we break this into two. We feel like risk management, the safety part of what we do is really important. That's why you kind of see this in, in two pieces. But, um, one of the things that we are doing is we are trying to put more money towards our employee safety programs. And that's reflected in HR and Risk Management's budget. Um, you're seeing a reduction in the Human Resource budget of 22.6%. Uh, and you're seeing an increase of 6% in Risk Management. A portion of that is changing a part-time, uh, employee to the Risk Management side to help us push forward additional safety incentives. And, and really, um, create, I, I've been pushing since I walked through the door a, a culture of safety. And we want to continue to push forward on that and not let that slip because, uh, first of all, we want our employees to get home to their families in one piece. And the cost savings for not having employees hurt and at fault accidents occur is a cost savings to all the departments. So, um, that's, that's really, uh, important as we move forward. Supplies and Services decrease for HR is there's a government jobs platform, um, that's being spread between all the departments instead of just having the HR, having that accounted for just in HR. So that'll move to IT and that'll be distributed and charged out as an internal service, uh, fee to all the departments because all the departments benefit from it. On the recommended budget for Risk Management, that part-time personnel, person, that part-time person moves over there. Um, the technology allocation for training and support is, um, is going to be really important for them as well. And then Capital Outlay, we, we, um, move the vehicle that they use to that, uh, five-year capital lease program as well. And the next slide is just their numbers. Um, if you haven't seen it, there it is. IT, um, the IT budget is, uh, increasing. I, I hinted about a portion of this already, uh, or covered a portion of this already. Supplies and Services increased due to moving that, uh, government jobs platform from a IT to the, I, from HR to IT. Uh, and then, uh, we're also, um, have an annual maintenance for our CAD replacement system. Um, and then we've, we also, of course, are experiencing increases in the need to train and pay for licensing. And, and part of that is the document management system, um, that we, that we purchased in '20. Now we'll, we'll now have the maintenance fees moving forward on that. Um, so, yeah, not, not, not a great deal of changes, uh, in, in IT other than some transitional stuff. Uh, Recreation, um, the Recreation budget is, has an 8.7% decrease. Um, the person, part of that decrease, or part of the, I'm sorry, part of, they, they had an increase. No, it was a decrease. Uh, they had a decrease in, uh, temporary salaries to better align with how the spending trends were really looking in the department. And then they had capital, uh, outlay decrease, uh, that they had, uh, due to a digital sign budgeted in '20 that, um, uh, that purchase was not moved forward with. And we will carry that forward into 2022 more than likely, so. Under Pools, uh, we're hoping that, you know, one of the things that's, that's really unknown is how the state and how the governor's going to handle pools. There's been hints that the governor has, has felt like pool, outdoor pools or just pools in general, public pools are important and that they will get at some point, uh, a head nod to move forward with. We've been training our, and working through hiring. As you know, one of the big challenges for us is identifying lifeguards and people to help operate the pool. Those people have been identified. Uh, we provided a little bit of training for them already, um, but, um, not exactly knowing if, if we're going to be able to open by Memorial Day weekend, uh, still up in the air. So there's a little bit of unknowns on the pool side of things, which of course is playing, uh, a little bit of a, a role in our personnel costs. We've looked at that. Again, with Recreation, we've looked at kind of temporary salaries and just did, conducted kind of a realignment and brought their spending down based on what their history has been. I think there, it's been their habit to ask for a couple more, um, temporary positions and, in case they had an increase in, in need for that and not utilize it. So, uh, there's that. So if we saw a huge increase in, in need for personnel, uh, we might not be able to react to that in '21 like we could have in the past. And then Capital Outlay, um, we just pushed off purchase of a re, uh, replacement pool, steps and vacuums and, and that kind of thing until 2022. And with that, that takes us to the golf course. I have noon as our end time. And, um, so Mayor, um, I would suggest that we've utilized everybody's time to the fullest and that we pick this up tomorrow.
I agree. Uh, and so, did you want to cover the golf course or leave it till tomorrow?
I, I think we're good to leave it till tomorrow.
Okay, uh, then thank you very much for walking us through this. I think, uh, it's been very informative. And I, I just ask if any of the council has any comments or final questions before we adjourn? And give us, nope. Okay, then, uh, thank, thank everyone that's been involved in this budget process. And we'll see you tomorrow at nine o'clock.
Perfect. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.